Wow, my wife is very good at speaking. I have heard that she speaks very well. She speaks very well in the country language. 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 The chief clerk of the Senate is Mr. Abram. The chief clerk of the Senate is Mr. Abram.
Senator Abraham. Senator Kikwabis Jr. Senator Isaac Arturini. Senator Ricky Carl.
AMI.
Senator Sencer E. Edgar.
AMI.
Senator Walter D. Chapman. Senator Bill E. Edward.
AMI.
Senator Stevie G. Edwin.
AMI.
Senator Awel Yopinchoap.
AMI.
Senator Alfred Senatora.
Mr. Mr. May.
Senator Daniel Laban.
AMI.
Senator Edgar W. Licanet. Senator Timothy T. Olwi.
AMI.
Senator Miguel Mike Loyola. Senator Benjamin H. Ludwig.
AMI.
Senator Magari Miguel. Senator Erlynne Esmoeck. Senator Sheldon G. Net. Senator Nalbert A. Perez.
AMI.
Senator Dionisio E. Simon.
AMI.
Senator Mr. Ray Simna.
AMI.
Senator Francisco Simram. AMI, Mr. Speaker. Corom, AMI, Mr. Speaker.
The chief clerk of the Senate is Mr. Corom. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief clerk of the Senate is Mr. Loyola. Senator Simram. Senator Net excused him. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. National, state or local government. He spoke to the cabinet of Bombay. Honorable Stephen Sanchosef. The cabinet of Honorable Francisco Yovanis. He spoke to the cabinet of Honorable Nelson Joseph. He spoke to the vice speaker Michael Floridar Abram. Honorable Senator Cancoros. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The government of the United States. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief clerk of the Senate spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. Wow, he spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief speaker. The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief speaker spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The floor leader.
The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate.
Motion closed.
He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The floor leader. The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. Senator Perez. Senator Cancoros. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief clerk.
The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk.
The chief speaker. The chief speaker. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate. He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate.
The chief speaker.
He spoke to the chief clerk of the Senate.
He is not guilty. 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 Report, as an official. Oh, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. Senator Perez. He is not guilty. 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 He is an official of the record. Vice Speaker Michael, he is the Superior of Weyopur. As an official, he is not guilty. Come here, Floridder. Come here, Floridder. He is the Superior of Weyopur.
Hello, Chief Clerk.
Speaker.
Come here, Senator Perez.
Hello, Speaker. He is not guilty. 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 Actual motion, he is not guilty. Report. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Hello, Mr. Speaker.
Hello. 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 He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Hello, Speaker. Senator Perez. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Oh, he is not guilty. Chief Clerk.
Standing Committee Report. Number three six two line eight six five. Number five. Governor Communication. Number three six nine line eight six five. And Standing Committee Public Courts. Consultation and Communication.
Hello. As an official, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. Committee in PWTC. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Chairman Laban.
Hello, Speaker. He is not guilty. 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 Speaker, Vice, Floridder. Oh, the Honorable Senators. Can. He is the Superior of Weyopur. He is not guilty. 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 My Speaker. He is not guilty. 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 Standing Report Committee. Three six. Three six two line eight six five.
As an official, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. Oh, he is not guilty. 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 Speaker. Come here, Chairman Laban. The Chairman.
Hello, my Speaker. He is the Superior of Weyopur. Speaker, Standing Committee Report. Number three six two line eight six five. May it long in an official. The communication. Three six nine line eight six five. The recommend. It can. The man man Elkenberger. Oh, the member in PPA. Board of Directors. Speaker, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Oh, he is not guilty. He is the Vice. Oh, Member in PWTC. And he is not guilty. He is not guilty. The March five. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. PWTC. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Executive Administration. The executive. Irons. HC. And Sipa. Michael. Isom. May William to be. The Office Attorney General. Oh, nominee. Miss Elkenberger. Nominee minute. It did as an honorable. Governor Joseph. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Mister Irons. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Stephen Joseph. Who choose. Oh, it did. Miss Limanman Elkenberger. Oh, Member in. Board of. Directors. HC. Isom. He is not guilty. 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 Nominee Elkenberger. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Committee and PWTC. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Nominee Elkenberger. We are Member in. Memberman. Oh, PPA Board in. I. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. When he was. Or to be. Causeful. And oh, go. And to talk. To talk. Miss Elkenberger. He is not guilty. My Speaker. When he is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Oh, nominee minute. He is not guilty. Committee and PWTC. He is not guilty. Nominee minute. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. PPA. Board of Directors. He is not guilty. Committee and PWTC. He is not guilty. 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 Report.
As an official, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Report.
Motion in close.
He is not guilty. 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 Report. Number three six two line eight six five. He is not guilty. 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 Oh, we get the Superior of Weyopur. Standing Committee Report. Number. Three six two line eight six five. The Committee and Public Courts. He is the Report.
Standing Committee Report. Number five six line eight six five. Number five. The Committee. Standing Committee Report. Number. Three six five line eight six five. The. The Committee of Resources and Development.
As an official, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. The Committee in RND. He is not guilty. Chairman. Edward.
Hello, Speaker. He is not guilty. 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 Speaker, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Flor. Honorable Members. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Well, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Oh, he is not guilty. Stop. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Mr. Speaker. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Standing Committee Report. Five six. Line eight six five.
He is not guilty. As an official, he is not guilty. 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 Report. Come here, Chairman Edward.
Hello, Mr. Speaker. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Mr. Speaker. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Please. Standing Committee Report. And not file. Standing Committee Report. Five six. Line eight six five. He is not guilty.
He is not guilty.
And file. Motion you. And file. He is not guilty. 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 Standing Committee Report. Number five six. Line eight six five. File now.
Mr. Speaker.
He is the Report.
Come here. Mr. Speaker. He is not guilty. Check up, please. Standing Committee Report. Five six. Line eight six five. Same content. Standing Committee Report. Five six. Line eight six five.
He is not guilty.
He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Please. Standing Committee Report. Number five six. Line eight six five. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Standing Committee Report. He is not guilty. 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 Oh, we get the Superior of Weyopur. Please. Standing Committee Report. Five six. Line eight six five. He is not guilty. Standing Committee Report.
Speaker. Speaker. Come here, Floridder.
He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Speaker. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Please. Standing Committee Report. Five six. Three six five.
He is not guilty.
He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Please. Standing Committee Report. Number five six. Line eight six five. He is not guilty. Standing Committee Report. He is not guilty. 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 Please. Standing Committee Report. Number five six. Line eight six five. He is not guilty. Standing Committee Report. He is not guilty. He is not guilty. Chief Clerk.
Standing Committee Report. Number five six. Line eight six five. Number five. Governor Communication. Number three six one line eight six five. The. The. Governmental Operations.
As an official, he is not guilty. He is not guilty. The Committee in JNCO. He is not guilty. Chairman Perez.
Speaker, check up. Come here, man.
Kitaibahan kumbalabina anjou. Kaid sabale roh nan sabulmatail wuya kupur oibahan piliopon eses chairman Perez.
Kalangan kum, mister speaker. Ibadawan kabrelaito nan sakaradan wau. Ang kupuran koros. Wau karagarak, ibadawan kamagit. Enggak masani standing komitirupot nambipaisakeu. Lebenial riisak payu. Masani yasabulman kitarang. Heltar yaman.
San salamau kamagutok koros maujung kamagutok masani yay.
Yay.
Uwong masani show. Kamagit puita, mia masanabe. Kamui chairman Perez.
Kalangan mister speaker. Ioralap standing komitirupot nambipaisakeu lebenial riisak payu. Tanto nan molwot sabulman kabinet communication nan booneisak walu lebenial riisak payu. Kamti badoyangnan korongrong kang korongrongkay. Utama san san nan rupot. Sangni kadirektagan me kamti tutuwalenki. Kamti recommend. Corporate communication namboneisak walu lebenial riisak payu. Me uwong nomination on director in public safety. Enggak kaburupurlang publishing governor. Aymet kalangan kupuram.
Speaker. Kalangan kublai kapei sen rupot me miayer. Miajem masanabe rupot.
Speaker.
Kamui senator Adwin.
Kalangan speaker ai tungolwau kapatabat. Honkong ifai floor. Honorable memberkan. Ai waw. Koror iltokai sananakan wainu. Honkira yaman tumbeikan me yampat yantay menshingran.
Mo mister speaker. Mo nasansalmao masame. Kabinetan kadarto. Sabulme. Iti tabukat. Utan legislaturanana take action. Ong nomination bukat either recommend or not recommend. Mo edenai badawan me kitaibahan kabralang buen reconsider. Ayatama reconsideration me kabinetan badawan degatun wuya. Bang kabreto tre nominimenet. Mister speaker. Ipepema. Mia pepemiu me koneng. Kamiti enggak reconsider nominimen. Ah enggak. Wuyawi moon rupot yuakan. Either way, anane. Kamiti make a decision. Ong assemblywot. Ma koneng kaidan recommend nominimen deso. Repor kaidan kakususki nominio. Ma koneng an mondio wuya. Kabukoyo me kabinetiyang. Sang kitaibanaletre. Kita wya da recommendation yu ma utan. Melaloe shite. Ong ya isyurba badawan yangon. Kitaibahan. Mia da songon recommendation yu. Bang kabralang. Governor sabulme. Nomination buen reconsider nishongon momut. Kaidilgin wuya nan kamiti tre me konewiawi. Sili kogin pakatar lang kamiti yu. Kitaikasalalang irayakan me kareta kitaishite. Men toki la badawan tamemi. I badawan me. Ong nominimenet mumonaibadawan nan rupot. Mumon korongrongkay wuyawi. Pilniyan sewote nominimeno. Shite lalito nan kamiti buen kak. Enwayak tevil kasalata. Irayakan me san sal nan rupot me san salmo. Mr. Speaker i. Inenen. O isite. Bang kitaibahan ususki ay. Kitaibahan ususki reconsideration. Kitaishita bang ususki nominio. Ay wasami yagisponobonki yong wuya ban recommendation. But typically recommendation in nomination either kitaibahan recommend. Aram aati yu me mieu.
Speaker.
Akaidi reconsideration. Kalangan.
Speaker. Kam kupurainponesema senator Artui ayam. Kamui senator Artui.
Kalangan kupuram mister speaker. Ijungal sakaradan kaping bang kupuran nilap. Melal patyan sabulmu omuchungal. Omuchungal sakaradan. Wau kiboni maciananindang. Nan molwot i sakaradan wau bang kupuran iso. Melal i sakaradan. Honkong kamu speaker, five floor, honorable members koros so koros me tibiyang kaidil. Mister speaker moin damimin kasalata san salme aduin kasalatar. Rupot yu me san salme perwuen rupotwa kasalakasalali. I kapingkiyang. Chiyankokamiti. Ite me i yakis pekasalki sojek korongrongban nominio. San salme aduin kasalatar. I kamelele me akunkoneng kaidan kebil korongan nomini. Buen kak kasalata irayakan. O nan statement me san sal nan rupot. San salme. Paligan kasalatar, palyanechi. Paligan kasalatar me sojek criminal record. Mia ong nominiat nan molongkopungililem tumpe yu. Obil nan nanan sojek informationkay manaan. Ananong kamiti. Ay kamelele me kamiti saik aledi informationko arato la ro wya recommendation. Ew dami kasembalki mister speaker. Resojek kabreto agi rai pran korongan. Ite rorongasang personnel. Personal ruwase me agi sojek min release documentskay. Arasojek tola o kabreto agi o korong. I informationko me. I kamelele me molwot ananen ma san. Aymet me i yakis pekasalki o ngibilyan rupotwa. O imenan san salme chontotoak man utan kunmia rehabilitation. Kajag koros. Kajagak wuya mekot me amur kajagak bilwukitak. Bukon emeneman kajail. Aymet imen kasalata. Information me. Chiyankosongosongaleadi sojelalato. Aymet mister speaker.
Senator Artui kamui chairman Perez.
Kalangan mister speaker. Kiu me badawan shite mekot kaidan badawan bukadana nan rupot. Riaw. Enggak san san ban kupur korosme. Wuya ben totoakwot, wuya ben wau. Imakarta sojata attachment yang. Rupotwot. Kamti shite man disclose findings mister badawan tiarata. Aye recommendation me kain mom mister badawan. Badawan badawan kupuran molwot. Ma molwot ban kupurki. Kaidan kak masani sewoten aramasaman. Kamti ban badawan attach. Badawan wama. Kamti tuwalenki. Mister badawan yang niwia bawat. Buen kak kol. Soran aramas. Megtai ban masan. Imakarta i badawan yada motion shite badawan etan aramas. I badawan communal communication. Shite bin men wuybakanan kak maangit badawan ismemenet. Me kamti chiyanku me kaburilang governor. Amiaralap omotomot songkoros san san nan. Rupotwot. Enggak i san san ban kupuramay. Kamti wotse nan sabulmatail legislature magin badawan dak kaula. Omakamti ban badawan tola. O totoongki manamankan me nyiban relaut walu nan sabulmatail posen kosanet. Nikita savina dekaso. Armash bukat koros me sabadawan. Badawan durang kamiti banggak lu yang kawan. Resangni rubukat mister speaker. Ikarabawat me sabadawan rupotwot momwot. Ma kupurkan ban kupurgi. Enggak badawatan detail. I yakis badawan langkubweki. Badawan waya masani depebalisin the details. San karabem badawan etan motion kaidan rotungti masan ban rupot sabulmanki.
Heltar yaman. San salme miayer. Kamagit yu kaidan rotungti masanabe rupot omia karyamanpe. Masular ai ban ponese kamagit me mia. Koros maujung kamagutok masani yay.
Yay.
Uwong masani show. Kamagit puitar. Koros maujung standing komitirupot nambipaisakeu lebenial riisak payu. Masani yay.
Yay.
Uwong masani show.
Privilege my speaker.
Nakamui senator Carl.
Kalangan my speaker. Mo naibahan padoyan nan itunggal privilege. Enggak patyan. Omuchungal. Sakaradan kaping wau kiboni badoyanindang. Itungal. Wau ban kupuran sananakan wainu me. Get nan molme singaranwot. Itungal wau bang kupuramuwong kufai speaker. Floor leader. Honorable senatorkan. My speaker. Imen parata momot kasembalki. O wuya. Atai jonal kaping. Honkong ban kupuran molan wau. Weki. Kupurala budhi kajaila rekak totoongki sabulmarai masan. Nan molwot buen kak kolokol wau. Woben totoak kasembal mekday baguwe. Kaidan iso get. Kajawi atotoongki sabulmarai masan. Buengkinkak kolokol. Saromawo woben totoak mekday bagi. Sabulmen molan wau jonwai. Dearamasin tumbeikan koros. Itungal privilege my speaker. Imen. Nisan salme singaranwot me. Honorable senator Ned patyan. Wuya namalamin me singaranwot. O niyan sojek weki rair kasembalki. Honorable senator Ned itungal worak. O itungal benene tiketik. Itungalanki. Sangni malipilibin kawnametoko ayaramen. Itungal kowa. Aymet wau karagarak pagi ta. Momot kasembalki. And patyan isanakan. Kitaikat yang nan. Loura nan kupur. Moment of silence ansukis. Kalangan my speaker.
Kalangan duk kaid katianan. Moment of silence. Duk kamui.
Kalangan my speaker weki ay. Itungalanki ta sumawot. Kapingki. Momotwot. Badoyangnan ansu kasembalan lolo nan kupur. Weki met imen parata speaker, five speaker, floor leader roluka. Momot kasembalki. Muring sewas. Enranwot. Kaidan kak makakpatyan ew beno. Kaunta ew lolo. Kauntaken lolo. Numor kuasa me baluwaran. Manakabo badpadoyan. Klok limau muring sewasang ranwot. Kalangan speaker weki asomo.
Kalangan duk ampatar eleven legislature. Kalangan kupuram. Masular sang duk omedikan. Ansan salme sabulmadan. Kamagit ong standing komitirupot nambipaisakeu lebenial riisak payu. Kaid sabulman kita. Standing komitirupot nambipaisakeu lebenial riisak payu. Miajek rupot. Privilege speaker. Kamui five speaker.
Kalangan speaker. Nau iman badawan sakarek kamui. Weki asite san sal nan rupot intadin kaburulang governor. Ah iman pagibahan kupuramui kamuyinkaketanang governor. Me menkairayu buenitan rupotwot kabralang ban kupuran governor. Wuya ki sakaradan bakbak yu. Bang kupurlesu.
Kalanganin kaway san sala sang five speaker. O ime ban wuyawi. Masular ira sang five speaker. Iban ponese chief clerk. Standing komitirupot nambipaisakeu lain riisak payu. Me pit rekamidet. Standing komitirupot nambipaisak payu lain riisak payu. Sang from omuyinkamtin sources and development. San salamau me RNT me ban reporteri ban ponese chairman in RNT. Chairman Edward.
Kalangan speaker membatwan kesa bali itungal sakaran wau. Membatwan yamouchin. Molwot enggak. Wila malampio sabulman kita standing komitirupot. Paisakriaw lebenial riisak payu.
Speaker. San salamau kamagutok koros maujung kamagutok masani yay.
Yay.
Uwong masani show. Weki kamagit puitar. Mia masanabe kamui chairman Edward.
Kalangan speaker. Patwan kesa bali itungal sakaran wau. Mister speaker san salme. Standing komitirupot paisakriaw lebenial riisak payu. Patwan. Nomini Mark Edward Costiga honkong director in RNT. Amone ban patwan. Rupotwot ya mister speaker. Bagin karagarak melal. Yinka koralabi rupotwot ya kamiti in RNT. Enggak kachkita kupurrail mamye. Karankainamo pekasal sang honorable scan. Mister speaker san sal nituan korongrong mekunwuyawi yang nominikan. Me wapsing governor. Yang kachto telukoto ong apmelal. Welyaben wapsing governor. Me patwotu. Tekachto gan. Kupuran sabulmukamiti. San salme nituanai patwan me kakano ralabi. Tamaki yu kasembalki. Me imenora labi sangni. Welyaben governor patwotu tekachto sakarkita ong sabulmukamiti in RNT. Ke yu unkaraben governor ayakakache. Kupura ayakakache tokan melal nomini Mark Edward Costiga. Ya ime san sal nan. Sabulmen den nomini chungal payetaida me patchpatch ban kupuramay. Donangan awari isak payu. O ewu remimenan san sal me governor welyaben governor kasalaya melal sabulmukamiti in RNT. Ayakak patwan totoak yang. Nomini. Isop ekasal. Aymet ale yang. Ayakak kupurata nomini. Enggak. Wuya bukon director in RNT. Mister speaker sabulmukamiti in RNT. Bilpatola. Nan korongrongo bilpatoyang welyaben AG's office. Utamimin patwan oralab nituanai ban welyan sabulmukamiti in RNT. Sojek criminal case. Mahuwong melal nomini Mark Edward Costiga. Sangnan malangkopungin national government. State government. O malangkopungin chikan me patchbonbi. Kamiti bilpatwan luketo local chief executive scan. Local chief executive in paywatch otakapeipeikan. Raikan me patwoto. Bang kupuran sabulmukamiti. Sakarkian kamiti me. Reinenen uchung kupuran governor. Ong nomini buen patwan wuya. Bukon director in RNT. Sangni bilkarabegan me patwan ta nituanai sakarkitan kawan. Sabulmen den nomini chungal payetaida me bilpatchpatch ban kupuramaykan bilspalela awari isak payu. I karabubukatch. Melayang melal irayakan me patwoto tekachto. Welyanto local chief executiveskan and paywatch otakapeipeikan. Arail kupurgi. Kupuran governor. Melal me pit nomini. Mark Edward Costiga. San salme rupotwatch rekamitet. Weki. Niwasakei me koneng renyang korongrong. O kupurrail ananganananaal ti buen kak wuya. Iren sewas melal ong sabulmukamiti in RNT. Karanggak segilo ngang nan molwot. Mister speaker. Kamiti bil patoyang korongan melal. Department in RNT. O irailkan to officekan mekunyang. Ew yang. Director in RNT nituanai ban wuya pukok. Utama imenora labeta welyanti sabulmukamiti in RNT ora labeta me. Raikan me patpatyo ban department in RNT ogunyang. Patyang pukokan me mi ban. Kemban payanwai. Sojepatwan chungalanki pekasal. Entotoak yang nomini ma molwot bang kupuran nomini Mark Edward Costiga. Sabulmukamiti in RNT bilpatoyang. Tebil korongan nomini. Mister speaker imen patwan ora labeta ira kasembalki me patwan. Patwan sang nomini. Apewu chemi imen patwan sair me ke yu kasembalki. Nomini sakarkian kamiti. Me melal TV department in RNT. Patoyang nan piloting ansu worry. A nomini sakarkian kamiti. Me ewa mission. Tombeian kak produce. O. Pilot and UDI or protection and cover tolamo. Armist speaker sangni karabegan me patwan sakarkitar o songon welyanki sabulmukamiti in RNT. Aymet meleyang sabulmukamiti in RNT ayakak kupurela rupotwatch. Enggak patwoto bang kupuran molwot. Molwot enggak kachkiyang kupura o sabulman kita. Mister speaker ayini mochmoch me songon kak. Orela pegi rupotwatch o welyanti kamiti in RNT. Yamamieyew pekasal tekkinamo me. Kupuran kamiti in RNT kakawalia. Imen pagitan karagarak. Kalangan kupuram speaker.
Chairman Edward kublai kapei sen rupot mesan sala sang kamui. Miajem masanabe rupot. Speaker. Kamui five speaker.
Kalangan speaker. Ai tungal sakaran wau bang kupuran sananakan. Ong gan kamui. Floor kambokabai senators. Raikong totoongkan o. Irailkong yang patongai tungarangmao honkaping paya mao. Ong tomtontoinso. I tungayanki kaping honkamti in RNT. Me betata ikidang governor. My speaker. Lebin kasin tompayo masani tepadawan omu wuya yeyi gebang. Tamaka komoreti yeyi ban wuya kelasen kowe arinamau. Wakela tesu to wakela. Wuya kelas tepeyew monaroman sojekemban monkwe la kukolat. Manakapmenetibadawan sangni ya. Ale sombarew badawata weki tiketawane. Skulta butes tiketawo patongi ewu panan. Benenei to wuya ben kaschool sewasme samowo. Adungal nono wuya. Nan prestaking school. Ansau yu me bilbadawan kisinbituk. Badawata kanakala school totoak. Wasayu me kapingkaren manakapmenet my speaker. I. Kasembalki olentontomen. Manso koros kin kul wau. Patu omakit mamang. Manakapmenet song totoak man. Patunan field yu muutan kasembalki melal. Butekalap kati yu masani. Food security. Remut awar local produce. Seadungal koyok tokalang rubukat. Me pit pensaketail. Jodokabukubunkan enpalyamar. Ari niyanso me kabnaiki eto manakapmenet. O ngai badawan amogit. Apatu. Atotoak ikaping gemel. Armashaman bosan gemelalu wau. Nanatungal pukok. Bang kakong awali totoke wapali kertanwe. Sangni karabo my speaker imen badawan wuyata. Kamugitani kaidan rotungti masan ban riaw.
San salamau me kamagit yu miayer kaidan rotungti masanabe standing komitirupot nambipaisakriaw lebenial riisak payu. O weki amia karyamanpe ai ban ponese masular masanabe rupotwot. Koros maujung kamagutok masani yay.
Yay.
Uwong masani show. Kamagit puitar kaidan rotungtiar masanabe standing komitirupot paisakriaw lebenial riisak payu. Koros maujung kaidan sabulman kita rupotwot masani yay.
Yay.
Uwong masani show. Kamagit puitar okaid. Sabulman kita standing komitirupot paisakriaw lebenial riisak payu sang kamiti in RNT. Privilege speaker. Speaker kamui floor leader.
Kalangan itungal sakaran wau sabal ong kupur. Speaker imen nau pagita. Kaidan kak kasemu klemen ol kasembalan wainu the winpontpe. Hey mister Michael Bernardo. The South Tabakpaowak kaidil. Patwan yewu.
Kalangan floor leader weki point of privilege me komuyan kaidan eleven legislature. Miajem point of privilege kamuis senator Latore.
Kalangan kamui speaker mo naibahan patwai. Me tibyakwe itungal sakaran kaping keipuni. Enggak badawang omuchungal. Kado wau bang kupuran raik. Itungal wau ngakuwongkum kamui. Melal patong kupurakan uwongtukasomo patong sunanakan wainu. Ong kufai floor aragosel dorkan koros. Ondi raikan koros me patong kaidil. Esakset obil nan men kabosa chikan. Speaker men patong kabosa on floor leader. Bilkak san salme olmano. Sautebe kabil welyan wainu nan. Poytin istorik obil kinapapali yitjak enwinpontpe. Aymet speaker.
Kalangan senator Latore kublai kapatabat mesan sala sang kamui. Miajem point of privilege masular ai ban ponese chief clerk.
Standing komitirupot nambipaisak silu lain riisak payu. Me pit legislature resolution nambirisakeu lain riisak payu. Sang omuyinkamtin finance.
San salma rupotwot ban rupot sang kamiti in money. Kalidaban ponese chairman Carl.
Kalangan my speaker ai tungal. Wau sabal ban kupuran sananakan wainu. Itungal wau ong biltutuade ban kupuramui five speaker. Floor leader honorable senatorkan koros. Bilmen lukayang ai tungal wau. Sautebe akto ban kaidan nituan molwot ya kasamuir. My speaker nau karagarak. Men kamagit momot kasembalki dan badoyangnan mas. Wuya namadam. Standing komitirupot paisak silu lebenial riisak payu.
Heltar yaman. San salmao kamagit me mia koros maujung kamagutok masani yay.
Yay.
Uwong masani show. Kamagit puitar. Mia masanabe kamui chairman Carl.
Kalangan my speaker. Ioralap. Standing komitirupotwot. Itan komodan. Resolution riisakeu lebenial riisak payu. Me kaway temye nan kamiti in money. Momot kasembalki dan kak kamanata resolutionwot. Me ban. Itan bekbek. Ong president in apesam. Enggak ekor. Wina pesam. And patyan wai payu. Winpontpe, winruk, winyapo, winkusai. Oh leadership. Enggak badoyangnan kesilipaken. Meetingen. Chief executive council. Me kunyangaki president. Kabinetkan speakerkan. O iraila officerkan enpalyan kawatakosenet. Medpe. Ew benawot engak kaji. Irayakan me pit kanenen kampakkap. Moni ban mugit. Patyan med. Ew benawot en bilkak kosanedi. Men kawaykan tepolisikan. Me ban ananen kolbene. Pepe and leadership and government limau. Ong kosanaben. Evolben monikan. Me bilwonon. Ban trustfankan. Me kokutar ansukisamalar. Me waito ban kampak kariaw. O songin rakaasembalki kan. Me government limawot. Ananen kosanedi niyanso matang. Mon monin kampak kesilu ai ban mugit. San salam ranwet Songan pung benawo, miayer me kawitata uya ben kaneneyu. Me ranwet, putu kosaneti inabesem, uya ben kanenawet uka la. Ay ma layang komitee finance, eh kamelaleme Pati benen Government limawet, the mangmangan government limawet, ananen bile wuyawi. O kosan, thi sanamawo, anmia, o kijaila benawo katlamotail. Ay imet ni oralab, maoren, komodan resolution, ata standing komitee report word, me itan Komodan resolution, number riyesake lebin ya riyesak payu. Kalangan main speaker.
Senator Carl, putu kapaisen and report, mieadre masenepen report. Komi senator Perez.
Kalangan Mr Speaker. Dalang report, muaw, muanaan, aparanan resolution, ay ban patiwa, ita motion, dan kaq Putungti masenepen report, sabulman kita.
Kalangan.
San salamama, miayer komoget yo dalar rutungti masenepen mia karyamanpe. Masular, masenepen report, ipan ponase komoget me mia. Koros mau dung komoguto masani yay. Uwong masaniso. Komoget puita dalar rutungtiar masenepen report. Koros mau dung dalar sabulman kita report word, masani yay. Uwong masaniso. Komoget puita rok dai sabulman kita, standing komitee report, number paisak silu lebin ya riyesak payu, sang komitee money. Mieadre report.
Salan Mr Speaker.
Masular, ipan ponase floor leader.
Speaker kaq, takema kombalin lebin anso. Dalang kombalin lebin anso. Komi floor leader.
Kalangan speaker.
Kail Usus, karatang tay kaker sa pahal. Tay sa pahal, ong na sabul matail wuya kupur, ong kak san saleng wey, sabul matail usus, metoke recommendation and report number 16, toaw lebniya riye sak payu, metoke Ms Lumananaman Helkenberger, when we are Board of Directors and Ponte Port Authority, Usus Aisak Wonow, the Aisak issue ay o payu so, met mwe wok tay kamanalar Ms Lumananaman Helkenberger. Miad namani?
Recommendations for standing report number 16, sak payu, met fit?
Kalangan Chief Clerk, san sal, met report, report non sang committee in R&amp;D, karatang man, ponase Chairman Edward?
Halangan, Mr Speaker, man pa chwon kaysa pahal, itungol sakaran wau. Man pa chwone, mo wuxin molwot eing bak, kacheng on recommendation and standing committee report, payu sakriau lebniya riye sak payu, ber karyam.
San sal, ma kama gud me mia, ber giam mia karyaman payan ponase, koros mo utung kama gud on masan iayi, uong masan iso, kama gud poi tar. Pak kamele, lebniya riya masan, pak tay ban komal, mi drel utar yau, o kacheng na nusus. Pahal, ong na sabul matail wuya kupur, ong san saleng wey, masabul matail usus, metoke recommendation and standing committee report number payu sakriau, lebniya riye sak payu, metoke Mr Mark Edward Koska, when we are Post and Director in Department of R&amp;D, the Resources and Development, Usus Aisak toaw ay o so riau. Met mwe wok tay kamanalar, Mr Mark Edward Koska, when we are Director in R&amp;D. Tay ban ponase, floor leader. Speaker, imen nuwau kama gud tay den, paya talapan, Isak limau me yai resolution calendar. Tay sa pahal, ok tay katkut pon number Isak limau, yai resolution calendar, o i ban ponase Chief Clerk?
Legislature Resolution Number Isak Gueu, line riye sak payu, proposal for resolution. Respectfully requesting His Excellency Wesley W. Simna, the President of the Federated State of Micronesia, to call for a convening of the Third Chief Activities Council and Presiding Officers of Congress and State Legislature meeting, at which gathering the remaining matters concerning the initial procedures for the implementation of Compact III can be finalized, inclusive of FSM representation in the GMCO, binding rules concerning the compact trust fund, and such other policy and administrative matters, which may require collective review by the leadership of all five of our sovereign FSM government, for adoption.
Kalangan Chief Clerk, man ponase Chairman Kar?
Kalangan, my speaker. Moni ban puran, patro. Ay tungol wau lap sa pahal ban puran, sanangan wey nu maket. Tay wui, wuy alaman men me seng ranwet. Ay tungol wau ban kupur omi, ong ke meril, vice speaker, floor leader, ono besan eder kan koros. Ay tungol wau, ong bil du duwad ban kupuran raikan. Ne biliyang pajeng, wuy alaman wad me seng ranwet, ban kupuran sanangan wey nu. Nuwau kerak-kerak, man kama gud memot kesembwal wad en kak bado yang nan. Wuy alaman, and komodan resolution number riye sak gueu, lebniya riye sak payu.
Kariyawel, san sal, ma kama gud me mia, koros mo utung kama gud on masan iayi, uong masan iso, kama gud poi tar, mia masan, amu Chairman Kar?
Kalangan, my speaker, ay tungol wau sa pahal. Yaralap, komodan resolution wad, wuya begbeg yu, memot kesembwal wad en kak. Itan begbeg wad wuliyan wey Ponte. Ban ong President and kantaka batabat. En kak ekar kasilibak and meeting in President ka, President in Tuwanagin pajeng, Speaker in Congress, or Presiding Officer, the Speaker and Speaker of Cabinet State Payu. We open wad en kak, kosanedi, o punggila wuya ben kanen en kampak keslu, wuya ben moni kan eban mukit sang FSM ong wey payu. Oni aso wodok kosanedi, wuya ben state payu eban yang pajeng pali yu, makin kak kowe, ebul ben monin kampak madan ke jamko. Pajeng met, embil kak kosanedi, ebul ben kampak trust fund, o man kawe kan koros me ban apali, melela nanen state ka. O sangon kosan dijekan, me ban kak sanam wau ong Government limau wad in Tuwanaday ban bado yang nan kampak kasilibak. Ani yaralap, i komodan resolution met my speaker, o kalangan ber gip geng, tungaren kian sumo.
Kalangan, your call, will capes me mia. Mia de masan eban komodan resolution, kawi Senator Muldick?
Kalangan, speaker. Moni ben yang patro ay tungol, sakaran kai paniwau ong patro ngtama komchi yang gier. Proto nan wuy alaman, ay tungol sakaran wau, ban kupuran sanangan wey nu, patro ngtayl. Eh, makoten patro ngtayl, me seng ranwet. Eh, wau naki pen eh, sawan entado akto weh. Ong keni kawi, Mr Speaker, Vice, floor Honorable Senator Kan Korus, yang ne patro ng, wasan iya alaman ranwet. Speaker, ta me imen, eh, peitak yu me imen, eh, peitong ke me, na mia, posotu Cabinet Resolution, patro ng, ta me, katomoh taylan so wad. Ay men patro wan, tokhi, na mia Cabinet Resolution wad, ayen kak patro ban, renamanaman Senator Kan, posen kak yang patro wan watuk, o we weki ya eh, itaylim ta me, ketail ban katarong eh, National Government only resolution. Chikami lele me eh, ketai bil kak, o embil weitong, amanaman Senator Kan, twenty-four hours, bok taylan kak. Watuk o we weki, o me mia peitak, peitong kan, en, en, en opola, mona tay ban tola, o kanganata resolution wad. Ay me imen tok yen mo, eh, speaker ma, tay kak, ew kapiyen pro pai toong, amanaman Senator, ma, tay kak opola kap, kaya la padi la kap, kalangan.
Kalangan, mia, ben yang, Speaker, ben yang masan iro wu. Akumah, preman ponase ma Chairman, ong re, san sal, san Senator Muldick?
Kalangan, my speaker, ay tungol wau sa pahal. Imen apali, iran kalalabak kesembwal wau, nan komal, my speaker. Men ber gialen komal in lebniya.
Tay komal ma, mi drel, tariyau. Kalangan, and Senator Ko, ok tay sa pahal, na sabul matail wuya kupur, ok tay katkut nan masan eban resolution number riye sak gueu, lebniya riye sak payu. Kawi, Vice Speaker?
I kamele nu nore resolution wad, mokasampay. Oute ba, o ana nen kak abolta, karatang man yata mo wuxen nen. Itungetim asan bausus kila.
Kalangan. San sal, ma kama gud me mia, o san sal me mia karyaman ban kama gud on, karatang man ponase. Koros mo utung kama gud on masan iayi, uong masan iso, kama gud poi tar, ok tay retungetier, masan eban resolution number riye sak gueu, lebniya riye sak payu. Tay ban kacheng na nusus, ben resolution wad. O san sal, met ususin resolution, tay ban kinn kawatan illi matail ka. Arata koros mo utung komodan resolution number riye sak gueu, lebniya riye sak payu kawatan, illi me palimaun. Kalangan, and san saleng wey pokon, masabul matail toto, to usus, metoke komodan resolution riye sak gueu, lebniya riye sak payu. Usus Aisak toaw ay o so drum, mau uong komodan resolution number riye sak gueu, lebniya riye sak payu. Ban wad, tay kamanalar resolution wad, number riye sak gueu, lebniya riye sak payu. Mia de resolution, masalar, i ban ponase floor leader. Speaker, imen, wuyata kama gud on begik tay langkak, chorogut yo, hapali number isak issue, yira choror.
Karyaman.
Speaker? Tay chorok tier, pon number isak issue, o i ban ponase ma Vice Speaker?
Kalangan, Speaker, ay tungol sakaran wau sa pahal, ban kupuran sanangan. Kalangan so ka. Issue akat unmole, tumole, nan, wasan wad katki yang entar wuy alaman ranwet. Ay tungol sakaran wau ban kupur omi, Speaker, floor, kamba kabayan or pol Senator koros. Yaralakkan me so bay wuy alaman, keuntun pe koros. Ningsa bo likin sap. Man Speaker, ay tungol yira choror en an so kusit. Aban toke, bekbeken, moment of silence yu, silence yu en kak wuyawen, my Speaker. Begik karaboyu me, arata, maslikin Ponte, ni April isak Wonow, en riye katri isak payu wad. Me ninen kesembwal melel, oute ban mukit wo, my Speaker. Sang ni, manaman laan inon minumin salutak, maki yang salutak en man FSM, en kak, mau ro kausan wey na merka. Elasang, manaman laan inon minumin salutak wo, may ban pong, kitwab gualisak Wonow, mukit la naramas kan, kitwab gualisak su batoto. Ole lan so ku kat. Ni isak Wonow, en, Aprilen paru wad, mukmukitin komurumur. Ang penenai kan, jong kausan, kamba kabarel kan, begi, popaut, baba kalap, nono kalap. Me yai Mr Santos Anton, o Mrs Regina Anton. Sabatan long gedhi, keting sabatan long. Aratu ngal serikan, o kamba kabarel, mukmukitin yang wey na merka, begikin, ni alaman wad ban wad. Yarab ban protor, sanbi yang wey Ponte. Ren aratu ngal, penenai, en Ponte wad, o aratu ngal wasa. Ni ra il mukmukit, kaiden mukitin murmur, ab mukmukitin komurumur. Mukit so ka shikpe por ta. Me san sal, me waran nan sap, ni ra il patro lale. Louisang, men bil paytai, me toutou. Kamaski das to sabotet, o gemela, kalulata kamaskela, gemela, ra il me one man me patro lale. Me san sal, yai Mr Anton, ay tungol bout. Aratu ngal batak, manakabu boutgip, peina kabun sababik, man, o pil riyan peina kabu seraben man, o anpobout tikutu karatungal seriman. Koros kabel sali talan. Ranwet, kobokonin sawas bak sawas, kabakap, belbelian gui, mayi. Begi, otin songwet. Apa rata, nanarein, men Ponte ite me na FSM, abadabat nan wey na merka. Nekaiden mukitin bengedeng, murmur, mukmukitin komurumur, aburap kamba ke. Komur yang wey wad, por ta. Imen tungol ingkian sumo, my Speaker, nan sakara tauwet. Wuyay tungol sakaran kalulama. Ang penenai koros, en wey gedhi, o wey sa pahal. Makat, patro Ponte, o nan sapon wey. Tay lolau, o kabakap. Opurya moyla, metakla, masabuekata, mueskata. O kabel sali talan ra il bukat, kamelela makatun bham yaran kot. I bilbaton kamelele, me maaman ra il mau, tokai, raban minan labalan goirak. Alukwet, yai mukona, nu mom me san sal. Samadail, rongan tino niko, my Speaker, kawe kinki taylier, man Ponte, pulun kawe kuat. Kidan, manika yuol, wasan melah, o wasan sertu, wasa koros. Ibaton kamelele, me mauren sampawet, me ra il bukat kuwaki, ab malebileban kono tokai ra il. Akonong, zamadail goden katfito arer, en kalomur, ngoyongin me mauren kan. Mawiyasang sang, me pato. Pokaboro ren kak niyera ra il. Melel penenai kan, nan kausap songkron, ono long wey gedhi, o wey sa babik, kolonya, ton wey sa babik, o wasa koros. Sang ni karabowet, my Speaker, ibadu pato. Isuropor yang may tungal seri, isuropor yang may tungal baba, ta itungal penenai me yai. I penenai ki ra il bukat koros lel, men sa babinka. Imen wuliyan dit penenai, wey yubaki, memot kesembwal wad, kailen kak ketyang, o wuyal lolau nan kupur. Pon kalulama wui, yarala kan, mama singgila mukit wad, pato gila, o pil, kalwar ra il celok en kak, batabat, ban kupuran kono. Yu yake bekbek yo, my Speaker. Kalangan, komik, anarbur number koros.
Kalangan. Mon, tay ban kacheng na moment of silence. In patang tay tam, san sal sang Vice Speaker?
Nkawi, Senator.
Kalangan, Mr Speaker, o kalanganin Vice Speaker. Mon, san sal, met mukit kupurya wey wad, melele sairta, main, mukital ban naramas, wagim mukit on moment eh, accident wadre wuyau. Imen patro wan, me, peina kaburya men, wuyat riyan yu, o wara, nono baba, bilapten peiti sang sapwabikayu, woran bilakis karen tong, mukitin kabel sali atla me wuyau. San sal, me, eh, peina kaburya men, me sapungalar, tabilaletier, malebileban kono. And Senior Pastor in sapwabik, atungol seraben riya man, Mr Nixon, hinako karyana hinak. Ay men kabatrayang tay po, and san sal, me, kaiditu wui riau, kamelele me dunpeypon yang, patro gila tam, san sal, kalangan.
Kalangan, kail poiyak lebniya asu, kailen patel, tam san saleng. Kalangan, mia de, ira, nokoneng taylen bil, atungol, kawi, san sal pare.
Kalangan, Mr Speaker. Men baton kaysa pahal, itungol sakaran wau. Teyu ban, puran, sanangan me yang tayl. Sakala telemo kweki, mia molen, ir so peiti konan molwets, on main kupur, ben ket ban. Ay tungol wau ban kupur omi, so, kabatrayang, o moden letseriter kesembwal wad. Oni ban patro wan, ta iton rotoror, ibatrayang, yaratoror, me, tieng air, weki yapi't mau, me, katal masanin. I bilmen baton, patrayang. Ibil men barawan patrayang, olryaman makasaleta, pato man yeh, men barawan, kothaman magtaygin, pongi, kothaman sapul man giling tok. Emanggi songkoros magin wuyawu, ye anshu ban me bilkatun kosanutier. Ay dong retoro ran ranwud, Mr Speaker, epit, communication yo me, assigned yang, comedy, environment, culture, men nanda silisak walo leban ya riisak payu, ibil barawan tabiatar kotoogi ayu. Epit totoogiung me, karayawka binarobesayar, belian police, EPA, o PTA rankak, kamogit stoza kan me patapotaponaan. Mr Speaker, nan sapmatayl, oyan kosanet, hinapui, pet sangan dipso, en naramasan nen, ye sotra kita waimun. Asansal me songan kara petoro me stoza kan patapotogi ponaan, o bilasansal er isma pukogi, pukohan, barawan sang stoza ponaan. Menan asansal me, yangan stoza pokat, ipatapotaponaan, tama irael patapot, stoza pokat paypiyi pokki accident. Wural police kan, ni rael apali keiskan epit accident, endosansal amo ban kuburatayl, o bilwuy pokon, ne pukohan lap, ni rael tongolenggi, en wakil barawan, fundamental duty, to protect life, property, and to preserve peace. Property en aramas pokat, ipatapotaponaan, kaidet insan rael, ni rael do yang kabol ponaan. O balawd rael sotra angi kak, en kamogit stoza pokat, o bilmie wortin stoza pokat, ni rael patapotaponaan. O balawd bilkakairgi kabol ni rael andi. Mr Speaker, sangni kara pe, o bilksilgo mogomasayner kamti, imen barawan meata kamogit. Kamogitwet metropier, o bil chupet sangni ksilgo mogomasayner, silisak walo leban ya risak payu. Kametian chain go ankak patrayang, pokki epit, en naramaset dipso, o bilwasan pasan, o bil sile, ay sotra pet sang.
Kariman. Kariman. Om kubryama, kametian chain go?
Kametian chain go ankak patrayang, kametime komasayner her communication.
Nak try katlaw, masan iro, wobogimie kariman aban kamogito, koros ma utung kamogito masan yei, uwong, masan iso, mie masan aban rowo. Wain, asansal, repitatai rowo, nak komwi, Senator Mogit.
Imen yang pato wanakis, nepidiro wu pokki, tama, chenrenin chain go kasaleta me pum. Ab ika melileme, kisilikoogisme, o kamogit yo muyawu, me EBA toula angerlale, epasandasang korongrong kay me uyuyawu er koto, film ye uyawuna, uyawunan tent legislature, dan public works. Me kosaneti, kosanti kay me kamogit pen stoza kay sang negailan yal, oruas pilpatoyanger aramasa kay yang aki wasan wye stoza kan, ren kamogitasang stoza kan negailanaan. Ika melileme, i komotabuko, o kosantabuko, me kariyang wuin gedhi, film ye insawu, mie stoza kay meri, marki ala X, bana naneer kamogit redjukianger, paneney yo aramas nitungalendis stoza ko. Ar isto kamelileme kosantawu, wuyame okot ma uwong kosanet. Wuyi kamelileme, buin me wuyakamogitwo, irael wuyayar, rael pokon toto, olalang, insawu meri ban kamogit stoza ko, wewa mieayar, nan local government ka, on aramas pokon wo rael stoza ko. Ar ya wewa kitoto, mau, tano olamangal, mia tay sotra wewa ki sang rael mas, ma mieayar kosanti reo ki yang aramas wo rael stoza ko, akchailan banasiya sayno ang committee kapuiya kala to, mau kay meru kuta. Ar ya imen batkiyang speaker poi kamelileme, magchailanana, kinwewa mas mona chailan toula, o kapkapuiyap to tongkan, eh mia tay kongyata motional legislature, kalangan speaker.
Speaker, kalangan maguproyaman ponasima, moka watan indi marayang komwi.
Kalangan men speaker, ay tungal waw sa pahal ban kuran isunan ken wuy nu me, chapuiyakay me sangranwud. Ay tungal waw entutu wad ban kubrum men speaker, ok ban kuburakan koros. I patrayang, Rey Honorable Chairman and Chain Go, ira kasambal yo met, government seerta en aramasa raitipso. Mie, me barawan, resodebatonya rael tungalim, dipso po. Ira men ponte kan government ban atiasang raitipso, kuran kosanayangakis wasan aramas pokat sudepanawan. Ay ay tungaleren kabadabat met on, Rey Chairman and Chain Go, ira ya kan mesansal sang Honorable Senator Mogit, ira kasambal kay, o imen pegik committee and bil check, mau ira pokak, kalangan men speaker.
Kalangan. Kamelilema kamogito kaiden chailan kawuti tatbago, reprot kaneney en wuyawu or repot omom. Speaker. Hey, miezu masan aban rowo?
Ey, ey.
Komwi.
Speaker.
Vice Speaker.
Wain ira kasambal met, pokikini insawu me ban kamogit kambriyawet ban reprot, arabil kak tok tamutananan, pokki kayu, agai stoza pokat, rekaycon wasan alyalun aramas. Bil stoza kan, ribarbadu ban raito woi. Uma, me kapalaman aramasen kamogit atungal stoza pokki sudetoto, awiaban kamogitalang wasan me ban kak kamaalan wuyawu, ab me melisang koros, tonpayanana kamogita. Elaw hejikan wain ma, ranwud wuin gedhi asansal, kubron sunan ken wuin gedhi awilyantipunin waw, katarang, kabinabil speaker, tokpoken sawas pon kamogitasang, pin stoza koros met, kabarang mau ren aramas ranwud, pokki outa ban stoza ko, kabarang mau ren sap. Ar magdal ban, katkatwi tama konon taya, imtamelele me wuyaban kasambalan sawet, wuyaban kamogit yawasa stoza wabam konon patola ya, magonon laktagla laktagla, ah mogmogit, ananetoto, beteganos laka kamogiletap pontei. Elakteklab nasanit, tourism, tourism, yamomen sapen, environment den mau, mogit koros ma wuyawu mon, tenan sapakan, pitata stoza wolakan, udahan sotra mau wong sap, esotra mau wong resoma. Bil kabatrayang met men speaker, ibadawan kamelilo cuman, okonong maylela wanso mogaling kak tok. Pokenang register stoza pokayang register, nupain depression riisak limau, ipatapotolang local government ka. Ab sotra kamogit, men sawasakamogelal, na ban poktok nan jurnal, yi kawiwun depression riisak limau, kawiwya. Or ini, ansawu dokonong, prong poktok tembongan wuyawu, kaiden men salarimo, temen wuyawzo, norabang wotok tok tok mau kawiwun, registration obrola presentu tok tok. Or, itungalengge kabingyayay tungal poktok, on kambriyaw, kambien tok, ton, moglegel, okambien kosanet, kaideng dalen kama tenggalar aramasa, elalansawu magtay konon, en kamogiletap pontei uwong ban koros. Ananetoto, kambriyawun kawitetong, momot wod, pokilankak toula, tok tok chay ban kapuyan. Ay ay tungal pokpak, iman pokik daler, utungutu masan banrow.
Speaker. Asansal amo okamogit yo me, chailan utungutu masan aban kamogit, mesansal sang Senator Perez, koros ma utung kamogito masan yei, uwong, masan iso, kamogit poi tar, olitwana yaledi speaker and itiata appropriate committee, o imen barawan, me committee environment and climate relation, o committee chain go, ankak sawas penapaali, ira kasambal mesansal sang Senator Perez, or repot kutong momot wod, anso karwan.
Speaker, in barawan, Mayor. Chail kombal ma, minute two. Mike.
Speaker. Kalangan, kalangan speaker, elasang ne kara pokan umogitkan, o kabungban poi tan to tongkan me yayar ranwud. Speaker, newa wimane barawan pokki, momot kasambal wod, and katson patrosan nan, wuya kupur to wuyelamalam. May tangkambikan nan toto, poran sa pahal, wasan wuyelamalam tenan molwud, lakap klakijak.
Kalangan. Koros ma utung kamogito masan yei, uwong, masan iso, kamogit poi tar, okalangan Senator Ko, try ban kombal diar, o sa pahal ban lakap klakijak. Asamul matayl wuya kupur are. Harun.